Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here at 7 o'clock. And I am going to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Amanda, thank you for being here, taking the place of our city manager, Eric. And we'll have roll call. See if I can remember this thing. Okay, that's what I didn't do. Would you re-enter, please? I've got four. Missing one. Kristi?
We have a quorum with five councilors present, and Councilor Gillespie and Coleman requested to be excused.
Thank you, Kristi. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it, council. Next up is the agenda approval. Are there any changes or additions, Kristi?
If not, Mayor, I'll make the motion, we approve the agenda as amended and excuse Greg Gillespie and Ty Coleman.
Second. Motion is second. We start voting. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next up is citizen comment. I have three cards tonight, and I will start with Vanetta Burns. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yeah, I'm close enough. Close enough. And I thought you were going to call my dad instead of me.
Well, please, please tell us what your name is.
He probably has more to say than I do. Our concern is the decorations out at the cemetery. You know, we, my mom recently passed away, and we have a tombstone that has, you know, the holes in it to where we can put the flowers on there, but they're telling us we can't do that. We can only do that certain times because there was an accident like 30 years ago. That's why we have those holes in there, so that we can keep those flowers. And they tell us fresh flowers, well, those are going to be gone by the next day. So we're just hoping that we can put them on year-round. I don't know what else.
Okay. Thank you, Vanetta. Next up is Leroy Powers. Talk about the cemetery as well. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you. I'm here still concerned in cemetery. We were, like she said, I was told you can't keep decoration on there all year long. I paid a big price to get all that put there. I feel like I'm being used by not able to put them on there because they say you put them on a week before Memorial Day and two weeks after. And then from October to Easter, that's usually snow or frozen ground, and you can't put nothing on them. I feel like that, I was told too, that the rule was 30 years ago, they made that, you couldn't do that when we contacted one over it, but I'd like to see if it couldn't be changed while we couldn't keep decorating year-round because I paid a big price to get all that put out there. And I will say, they do an excellent job of keeping the cemetery looking good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next up is Don Thompson. Thank you for being here, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Don Thompson. I live at 924 Eighth Street in the beautiful city of Alamosa. I wanted to thank council for the Historic Preservation Proclamation for Historic Preservation Month that you passed at your last meeting. There were two events that we have put on. I'm trying to give just a little update on what the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee has been up to. We showed a DVD, The Greenest Building, speaking on how existing buildings are really the greenest since you don't have all the materials with the embedded energy going out into your landfill. Instead, you work with that existing building. And then last Sunday, Ronda Borders led a historic walking tour. I specifically want to thank Councilor Rusty for having attended both of those events, including the two hours of walking tour. One of our concerns, or actually, two of our concerns, are the Mountain Valley Church on State, which is on our historic list, and we're worried about what might happen with that. The county courthouse also, an existing structure that is, in many respects, the heart of Alamosa that we know will be empty when the county moves to the facilities to the south. As part of Historic Preservation Month, there was a research done recently, came out just a few days ago, titled Older, Smaller, Better: Measuring How the Characteristics of Buildings Influence Urban Vitality. And I like to think of the word vitality as being quality of life. The executive summary, a paragraph in there that I think really speaks well to it, much better than I could myself. The study demonstrates the unique and valuable role that older, smaller buildings play in the development of sustainable cities, based upon statistical analysis of the built fabric of these three major cities, which were the study cities. The research finds that established neighborhoods with a more, with a mix of older, smaller buildings perform better than districts with larger, newer structures when tested against a range of economic, social, and environmental outcome measures. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Don. And now we'll go over to follow-up, and I'm wondering if staff might have any follow-up on the issues over at the cemetery. Thank you, Heinz.
Little bit of history. The rules and regulations that apply to the cemetery were approved by council in February of 1986. And the passage that Mr. Powers is concerned with is the one about artificial decorating. And I'll go ahead and read it, it's a short paragraph here. Artificial decorations are allowed only during these designated times, from October 15th through the week following Easter Sunday, one week before Memorial Day, and for two weeks following Memorial Day. At all other times, artificial decorations will be removed by grounds personnel. And looking at the history, at some of the documentations that I found through Laserfish, three reasons why they did this was mowing hazard. They did have a worker injured one time as they ran over some of the plastic flowers and the wire got into the mowing apparatus and injured that person. And the other one is, the second thing was the, people were placing flowers on the graves and on the headstones themselves, so they become an obstacle for the staff mowing. They have to get off the mower, move the flowers, and then go on with their mowing. And then the third one was that eventually these flowers begin to fade and look bad. So those are the three reasons that they put the, formalized the regulations. And this appears it's kind of an odd document because it is a council-approved document. It's not a staff-approved one, and they do have a paragraph in there called alterations amendments. And the city council reserves the right to alter, amend, revoke, or add to the foregoing and following rules and regulations from time to time as experience missuggests and their judgment approve. And I've, you know, I looked around at other places. It's whatever the local entity wants to do. Looked at Sterling, is Sterling, Colorado, is almost exactly like ours. So it's a matter of where you want to, if you want, are you concerned with safety or not? The ease of mowing, or, and the way that the cemetery looks, or, if that's not important, then we can change it.
Thank you, Heinz. Rusty? Just a quick question, Heinz. Would that be something that would come up through the Recreation Advisory Committee, or is that something that would have to be discussed with just council? If we wanted to look at something different?
Sure. Parks and Rec, the cemetery does fall under Parks and Rec, which cemetery is part of that, so I would see that the board would be appropriate venue to go through.
Okay. I would at least like to see a little discussion around that and, you know, give us some, something to come back to our direction on that. Thank you. Thank you, Rusty. Charlie?
On these stones, they have these pots on the sides. Are they allowed to put flowers in those? You know, because they're high above where your tractor doesn't come through and, you know?
They are that, but still, the rules don't, do not specify whether they're in the pots or in the vases themselves. It's a timeframe period, and if you take a look right now, you know, the wind's at 50 miles an hour, nothing's, normally, nothing's going to stay in there. It's going, eventually, something's going to get pulled out, and it's going to become an obstacle for the staff.
And another question, you know, like they mentioned, this has been a long time ago that this was approved. Have you had a chance to maybe think about it and, and maybe give council some advice on what direction?
I think Councilor Johnson was, made a good point of maybe running through the rec board and see what a overall staff and rec board recommendation would be. Because it, when it looks, this article, this rules are council-driven. I mean, they're specifically approved, these regulations.
Sure. Thank you, Heinz.
Thank you, Charlie. And I think that might be a wise decision, Heinz, that we've had, at least get some communication and some discussion going on this, and maybe we can come up with a plan that's more conducive to allowing the folks to utilize that, and of course, protecting our workers out there as well. So maybe we can discuss that at the next rec board meeting, or whatever staff would recommend.
Yeah, next one, it'd be early too, and then we can do that with, along with the capital, so.
Thank you, Heinz.
Okay.
Thank you, council. Next up is Consent Calendar A. We're going to receive April 2014 Expenditure Report, approved minutes of the regular meeting May the 7th of 2014, Resolution Number 6, 2014, a resolution rescheduling the June 18th, 2014, regular meeting of the Alamosa City Council to be held concurrently on July the 2nd, 2014, and to receive the April 2014 monthly reports. Are there any questions or comments? If there's no questions, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Missing one. Thank you. Kristi?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Kristi. Next up, we have regular business. We have presentations from an outside agency, and tonight we are lucky enough to have Anna Mae Lindsay and Stanford and another, would you please, would you please come up and tell us a little bit about what's going on with the GED program?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the invitation to be here, Mayor Lucero, Councilman. It is our privilege to present to you a program that we have been, that we have been doing for the last 15 years under a grant through the Department of Education and the AFLA program. Unfortunately, I bring bad news, and that's why we're here. We presented a proposal, RF, Request for Proposal, back in March, and we were told in April that we were not funded. And we were not funded, and neither were our counterparts in west of I-25. It, I think they forgot that we existed. I think they think we're in New Mexico, and I don't know what happened to the western part. But it was a shock because not only did, were we told we weren't funded, there's another program in Alamosa that was not funded, and there are no other programs left in the valley for GED services. And our services are critical. We have, we do not have room to take everybody at once, so we have waiting lists of 25 or more at any one time. And so I consider that very critical. And for the AFLA program, Department of Education, to tell us that they had $4.1 million to distribute, and they gave it to 15 programs, 36 programs applied, and they divided that only into 15. And of course, I have a map here that is very telling that I would like to pass out. Bonnie, will you do me the honor, please? Except the last one's mine. It's a, it's a map that's very telling about where they divided the money. And those X's that you see there are, are the counties that the money went to. Well, we are in the process at the moment of appealing the decision. We've had two, two steps that we've followed in the appeal process, there are three, and we have done step one, and we have gone on to step two, and to no resolution. And now we are awaiting step three, and step three is to, to appeal the process that they followed. We really feel that they, their process is flawed because they did not have, number one, they didn't have any readers of the grant from rural Colorado at all. And number two, they didn't fund very many rural programs. And so we really feel that their process has been flawed, and we're questioning the process. So our hearing on, on June 4th is going to be about that. You have in front of you a talking point sheet that I gave to you. Kristi, thank you for passing these out for me. And I'd like for you to follow with me, and then we'll, we'll go over this, and if you have any questions, please feel free, okay? We're trying to make this as easy as possible for people to understand how critical this is, so that you are able to support us. Number one, the current program has been in operation funded through AFLA, and that stands for the Adult Education Family Literacy Act, the Colorado Department of Education for the last 15 years. The current program, under my direction, has served over 1,500 students from around the San Luis Valley, because they come to us from, all the way from Suatch to San Luis, 8,000 square miles. The current program located at the Valley Campus of Trinidad has seen over 300 students obtain their GEDs, and over 20% have gone on to college. TSJC, the Valley Campus, is a wonderful place to be, not only for us, but for our students, because not only can they go to school there to get a GED, they become very comfortable and immediately transition into college. And that is a real plus. 84% of our students in the last year have shown progress of one or more, and we call them educational functioning levels, but those are grade levels, basically. That's a, that's a big amount. When our students come and they are, they've made up their mind, that's what they want, they succeed. And I have a wonderful staff who assists with that. The Center for Adult Learning, which is what our center is called, we have experienced retired teachers. They all have degrees, and they've all been retired from public schools. They don't come there because they need to make a living from it, because they don't. They come there because they love teaching, and they love doing what they do. So it has been a shock to them, not just to me, that we're going to have to just close the doors on June 30th and tell the students, you, we don't have a program for you. We also have, not only do we have degrees, we have a certification that the Department of Education requires us to have. It's called the Adult Basic Education Authorization. We have to take classes on our own time to receive this certification, and that's above and beyond our, our BAs and MAs that we've got, because it's not good enough for them that we have those degrees. And then they shut the doors on us. So that's very disconcerting. As I said earlier, 25 people are on the waiting list at any one given time. We have to tell people, you know, if you'll wait a little while, we'll get you in. But now, we can't, we can't bring you in at all. Only 15 programs were funded out of 36 applications. Most of the programs were urban, as you can see from the map. Many of the programs that were cut were rural. Montrose was cut, Gunnison was cut, Delta was cut, Pagosa Springs, Ignacio, Hollyoke, Pueblo West, Adams County. Adams County has a lot of poor people, and so it, it appears as if they targeted rural and poor people. What kind of a, what kind of a situation is that? Many of the programs that were cut were rural, and the San Luis Valley has no adult education programs within 125 mile radius. Sure, we can tell our students, you can go to Durango, you can go to Trinidad. Do you think they're going to do that? Our students can barely make it to our center. Now, I understand that there's a little program in Montevista with the Delta Center. I spoke to the director, and he said, I have opening for about eight students. Well, how's that? How's that for an option? In 2012, I applied for the same grant. 32 programs were funded with $4.7 million. This year, for the 2015-16 budget, 15 programs were funded with $4.1 million. Now, you can see that there's hardly a difference, and you can also see how they divided this money so inequitably. Some of these programs, I understand, got upwards of $900,000. Well, if you're giving out $900,000 at a time, of course, you're going to run out when you reach 15. And when I spoke to the state director and I asked her why we weren't funded, she says, we ran out of money. Well, of course, you ran out of money. If you were given $100,000 or $200,000, you wouldn't run out of money. You'd be able to divide, divide it a little more equally. Now, excuse me if I seem passionate. I apologize if I'm too passionate and I get excited, but you know what? I love what I do, and I do get passionate. Thank you. Many agencies in the San Luis Valley who refer students to the GED program are required to send their clients to the GED program. I've gotten calls from corrections, from probation, from Department of Human Services, and they said, where are we going to send them? What are we going to do? I said, why don't you write to the Department of Ed and ask them? Because I can't give you an option. The Center for Adult Learning at the Valley Campus serves between 88 and 125 students per year, with 64% Hispanic, 36% between the ages of 25 and 59. I actually had a woman get her GED at the age of 67. And 64% are between the ages of 17 and 24. And those are students who didn't make it through high school for whatever reason, but most of the time, those are students who were so smart and so challenged that they, that they were bored with public school. They come through our program, we realize where they are, we can, and we can get them out of there. The San Luis Valley's poverty rates are five of the bottom eight poorest counties in the state. I don't have to tell you that. You know that. And what, what brings, how do we turn poverty around if not by education? But they're taking away that opportunity. Now, there's a House Bill, 1085, you're probably aware of, that is now sitting on Governor Hickenlooper's desk to be signed. It is the Adult Ed and Literacy Act of 2014. It is $900,000. Now, I'm wondering, where is this money going? How much will rural Colorado see of this? Our grant was denied. We only requested $110,000. So the question lies, what are we going to do about this? I am here tonight to ask you for your support, writing us a letter to the Department of Education, letting them know what our community is about and how much this is needed, because I think if community gets involved, they're going to listen. Students are going, are, they are up in arms, they're willing to sign petitions, they're willing to do what they need to do. There was a letter in the, in the Courier from a mother, I don't, I don't know whether you read it the other night, a letter to the editor. She is a mother who's got a special needs child. He's not a child, he's, he's a young adult. He is the brightest student, but he's got emotional, psychological issues. But we have done wonders for him, she tells me. And she, she wrote a letter to the editor expressing her concern for, for the lack of our program. So I included in here the contact person at the Department of Education, and that is Mr. Hammond, Robert K. Hammond. He is the Commissioner of Education. He needs to know that we exist. He needs to know that, that there is a, there is life after Colorado Springs, and we do exist, and that we do care. So, gentlemen, I am asking. And I would like to invite my colleagues here. Bonnie Ortega is the Associate Dean of Arts and Sciences at our college, and Stanford is one of my prized teachers, and I'd like for them to, to say whatever they need to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna Mae.
So the one thing that I want to make sure, that I let the community and the council know, is that at Trinidad State, we are very dedicated to doing what we can to help with the program. We completely support the program. We also really want to make sure that in light of our financial issues, which are not a surprise or a secret at the moment, that this has nothing to do with that. This is completely separate from that, and that although we're going to go through the appeal process and go and fight for the grant money that we should get until the end, we just want everyone to know that we really do support the program and are going to try to figure out how to continue to provide these services, because we don't want this community to be underserved, but we really would like the support to try to fight for the money that we should get for our community. So we just want to make sure that everybody knows that.
Thank you, Bonnie.
I just want to reiterate a few things about our students. They're very inspiring because they work so hard, and it's just incredible what they accomplish overcoming the barriers that they do. Anna Mae mentioned that we have many gifted students that come to us who didn't make it in high school, but we also have many students who have special needs and are, were in special education, and these students have a hard time making it in school. We are successful with these students. They come in at low literacy, first, second, third grade level, and by golly, many of them do get their GED, and I really, it's inspiring to me. I also want to reemphasize that we don't exist in a vacuum here. We do have a partnership with TSJC, and the agencies depend on us, not just the, the 17-year-olds that are coming out of the high schools that need somewhere else to go, and the older students who are working jobs that they need to get out of. But Anna Mae mentioned the partnerships that we have with the Human Services, Community Corrections, Parole, probation. These people need a chance, and they need education in order to get out of their situation and become functioning members of this society. So I know that you know all of this, but we're really strong on advocating for our students, because we have to be. And so we know that the Department of Education right now doesn't seem to understand this or doesn't want to fund us, and we want you to know that we really appreciate you hearing us tonight. And again, I would reiterate a request for your support, maybe in the form of a letter to the Department. to the Department of Education.
I would like to invite you all to our graduation, our GED graduation. It'll be held Saturday, June 14th at 9:30 in the morning in the Courtyard. We are graduating 23 students. And, you know, it's gonna be very painful for me if I have to tell them that it's their last graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna May. Thank you, Bonnie, and thank you, Ann. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I had one question. You said a number of your counterparts west of I-25 also didn't get funded. Can you elaborate on that? Other community colleges or learning centers?
Many of them are associated with, with, with public schools. Because the adult ed programs are learning centers, they're associated with community colleges, and they're associated with libraries, they're associated with school districts. And many, Ignacio is Pine River, they're, they're Native American, mostly funded by Native Americans. And, let's see, Montrose is a school district, Gunnison is a library, Delta is a library, Pagosa Springs School District, and there's a school district in Holyoke. And the Pueblo one is Bosse's. And so, they're all associated with somebody. And the reason they're all associated with another agency is because we have to have an agency who support, who, who supports us. They, they provide 40% of, of in-kind for us. And that's why we're with school districts and community colleges. Did I answer your question totally? Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Rusty?
Well, thank you, ladies, for your presentation. And we talked about this, Joseph brought this up at our last meeting, and it's really discouraging to hear the things like this are leaving our community, because it's, it's very important for our community, and especially our low-income families that need this. So I would be very much in support. And then Eric, is there, can you tell us what we would need to do to do a letter? Would we need a motion, a vote, or just a?
Yeah, you'd need a motion, and I guess I would suggest that the most streamlined form in which you might do that would be a motion to have staff, probably Heather, or maybe Heather and me, prepare a letter for the mayor to review and sign indicating support for the program. I don't, I don't know, this is the first I've heard of it, I don't know what the details of the appeal process are, and whether the letter is, is designed to be used as part of that appeal process, or it's more of a lobbying thing. So if you, if you could tell us what niche that would fit in, that might help.
Okay. Our hearing is June 4th, and you know, that's in the next couple of weeks. So I would say that, let's go through that hearing. Let's, let's see if the process works, and then we'll start in on the letter, on the letter-writing campaign. Is that fair? I mean, does that sound okay?
I would like to add, too, that our final appeal is to the U.S. Department of Education, should we lose on June 4th.
Right. We are willing to go, to go there. Secretary of Education is our, would be our next, our next avenue.
Did, did you get a letter from the Department of Education indicating why the grant proposal was denied?
We got a letter saying we were not funded, because there was not enough funding.
So that was it? It said, "You didn't get funded because there's not enough funding."
You know, in 2012, I, I applied for the same grant, and we got funded, no problem. We were, we were praised on our community partnerships. And this time, we, our community partnerships weren't good enough, and they were the exact same partnerships. So I really questioned whether or not they even read the grant, read the proposal.
These ladies don't have a clue as to why I'm standing here. I'm Kathy Worthington. I'm here for a whole different reason, is Xcel Energy. But I wanted to let them know, I'm also on the State Workforce Development Council, and I'm also on the Rural Workforce Consortium. The biggest partner you're missing in your whole issue is the Workforce Center. I just came from a two-and-a-half-day conference in Denver, and 10:45 was signed today by the governor at this conference. And our biggest issue, of course, is getting ready, workforce that's ready to be hired by those of us who hire people. The only way they're gonna do that is to have their GED.
Absolutely.
And so, the Workforce Center, and Ronnie Wisdom, I don't know if you should know her. She is the head of the WIB Board, she's also on both of the councils I'm on, and you need to talk to her ASAP. Because there's other options to perhaps get some funding through the different way. So I just wanted to throw that out, because this is an important issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. And ladies, we will, we'll go ahead and, and if you work with staff, after your process, if a letter is truly recommended or needed, I think counsel is pretty much leaning towards that. Charlie?
I also wanna echo Rusty's remarks. You know, when you take education away from any people, they don't have to be economically depressed, anybody, that's wrong, you know? And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and draw up a letter of support and maybe have our staff get together with you and, and draw up this letter and have it ready, so in case it needs to move forward.
Tell me what you need, and I'll get it for you. As far as statistics, addresses, and so forth, yes. Any questions that I may, may answer for you, I'm there. And I just wanna add a little bit. Senator Crowder's office called me, and they've heard, they wanna know what, what is going on. It's very concerning to him that geography was not taken into consideration when they looked at the grants, and that the readers were all, none of them were from, from the rural areas. And when we asked in our appeal why there were no rural area readers, the answer was, "We couldn't find any." We couldn't find anybody who was interested to read. Now, isn't that something? And isn't it the responsibility of the state director to, to make sure that the process is fair? That's just what I'm asking. Thank you very much.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Counsel, start voting. Christie?
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, ladies, and thank you, counsel. And we will have staff work on that, and should have that done within a short period of time, I would assume. I'm not sure what...
Well, the, the understanding I had from the Trinidad State Representatives was that they wanted to maybe hold off on getting that sent until the results of their appeal hearing on June 4th came in. But we can get it prepared in the meantime, certainly.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. Next up on the list is business brought forth by city staff, Public Works. Pat, thank you for being here. We're gonna talk about the Ramirez Lot Line Adjustment and Right-of-Way Dedication.
Good evening, counsel. We, lot line adjustments are a little different than subdivisions, in that it's a change in configuration of two or more lots without creating an additional lot. Applications like this normally see a final answer at the, at the planning commission level. This one's a little different. It's very similar to the one I talked to you about last month. You can see in the lower-left portion of the property, there was a piece of the deeded property that extended into what we consider the street right-of-way. And in cases like this, we request that they dedicate that to the public, so that we have an effective right-of-way to build a street someday. Like I said, this normally sees, sees final, final action at the planning commission level, but they do not have the authority to accept the dedication. So that's what we're asking you to do tonight.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, do we have any questions of Pat? I don't entertain a motion. Looks pretty straightforward to me, Pat. So with that, I will move the counsel accept the 20-foot right-of-way dedication on Catlin Street as presented.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Thank you. Thank you. Pat, next up is the first reading on ordinance number five, 2014, an ordinance providing for the designation of Blanca Vista Pond as youth fishing lake.
Youth Fishing Lake. A couple of years ago, when we were finishing the design for the pump station for the golf course out on Blanca Vista Pond, I had a discussion with Nathan. I thought it was a shame that we couldn't somehow put fish in there for kids. And after some discussions with Nathan and with Hines, we decided to go ahead and give it a try, see what we could, see what we could do. And this ordinance is basically the culmination of those conversations. We have worked in cooperation with Trout Unlimited and with the Department of Parks and Wildlife. They're both very excited about the, about the possibility. Trout Unlimited has actually already applied for a grant from their national chapter that has monies available for youth fishing programs, where they, they provide fishing poles and tackle boxes, things like that, to kids. And Department of Parks and Wildlife, this winter, actually did a survivability study at the pond, where they looked at, they, they tracked dissolved oxygen and pH in the water throughout the winter, to see if, if the pond in its current configuration would, would hold fish over, over the season. And they decided that it would. They have monies available at the state level to provide fish, free of catchable fish, free of charge, to designated youth fishing areas. So if we, if counsel decides to pass this ordinance, the Department of Parks and Wildlife will, will stock the pond, and they will, they will sponsor three or four youth fishing days throughout the summer. And they see this going into the foreseeable future. This, this isn't a one, a one-year shot. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, Pat. Comment?
Yeah, I had a question. How often will the pond be stocked?
Probably once a year. And they're looking, they're looking at catchables, a bunch of catchables that are gonna be eight to 10 inches long, and then they're gonna, they're gonna put some brood trout in there, really excite some kids. So they're gonna put some four-to-six pound fish in there.
And then, who will regulate the pond? If anybody tries to fish who's over 16, or that type of stuff?
The Division of Wildlife will, will play the main role there, or the Department of Parks and Wildlife, I'm sorry, I'm old school, I still call them the Division. Obviously, our police can enforce it if they, if they see, if they see something, but, but primarily, it will be the Department of Parks and Wildlife.
Why, I, I think this is a great idea. I think it's a good opportunity for our kids to get out there and not have to drive 45 minutes to go fishing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jan. Michael?
What would be the age limit on this, for the youth?
15 and under.
15 and under.
Yeah, that's the, that limit is set by the state. If, after, at, when they turn 16, they have to have a fishing license, so that's, that's how they, they determine youth.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Rusty? Well, this is something that I know Hines has been working on. When we designed the park and rec building right now, there was talk of doing a pond out in that area, and we've talked about fishing and youth fishing ponds, and we never, I, I'd never heard the idea of getting these other people involved in getting them to fund this, which is terrific. And just having the fish and wildlife involved in this, and Trout Unlimited, makes it just that much better of a project. Thank you, guys, for the work you did on this. I think it's gonna be a really good deal. Thanks. Thank you, Rusty. Charlie?
With that, I'll go ahead and make the, a motion that we pass on first reading ordinance number five, 2014, and set it for a public hearing on June 4th at 7 o'clock or soon thereafter.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Counsel, start voting. Christie?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we've got City Manager Legal, first reading on ordinance number four, 2014, an ordinance granting a franchise to a public service company. And our good friend Kathy Worthington is here to visit with us. Eric?
I'll, I'll present this to counsel. Certainly, if Kathy wants to step in and address counsel, she's welcome to do that, or if you have questions for her. She told me, actually, right before the meeting started, she would not be able to quote paragraph and line to you, but she would do her best. This ordinance is an ordinance to replace the existing franchise that the city has with public service for provision of gas and electric service to customers within the city. That existing franchise had been in place for 25 years, expired in January of this year, and we have been working on renegotiating a new franchise. So as I indicated in the council communication, this new franchise agreement will have a term of 20 years, be very similar in most respects to the old franchise agreement under which we've been operating. There are, there are a few differences, but the franchise fee of 3% remains the same. The city had a few points that we really wanted to protect out of the old franchise agreement, some of which got carried over into the new, and some of which did not. Probably the most important feature that did get carried over is the ability to co-locate in Xcel's trenching, public services trenching, and to co-bore with boreholes when they do that, for expanding our, our fiber optic network where we need to do that. If they happen to be putting a trench where we need one, we can take advantage of that fact. One thing that we've lost, and communities across the state have lost, is the level, level playing field provision, whereby if Xcel or public service were to grant a more favorable franchise fee to a community, you could renegotiate your franchise fee to, to mirror that. We never took advantage of that over the past 25 years, and I'm, and Kathy could maybe answer. I'm not aware that Xcel or, or public service has a franchise fee different from 3% anywhere.
There is not.
So the, the, the new agreement is business as usual, business as it's been carried forward for another 20 years.
Thank you, Eric. Kathy, thank you for being here. Would you like to share some thoughts with us?
All I would like to do is thank the city of Alamosa, and especially Eric and Pat, in the sense that negotiations for a franchise, when it's considered that it's 20 years, is always interesting, because it's a long period of time. And I just wanted to thank the city for their willingness to sit down. I think we had a very good give and take. I am the first one to admit that when you get about a 26-page franchise that's mostly been designed for the metro Denver area, there's not everything in there that's meant for a smaller city. But what we also try to do is make sure that if there are provisions in there that you want to take advantage of, we want to offer those to anybody. So that was the, the direction we went, and after some very easy give and take, we, we feel that very comfortable with the franchise that we have presented. So we hope that you do, too.
Thank you, Kathy. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments?
I had a question for Kathy, and I really didn't read this whole document, but I know...
You sleep okay at night, huh?
But I know last year, last year or the year before, we were having some discussion with Xcel about hanging our, our ornaments for Christmas and that. Will this cover it? I know they finally, they, they said, "Yes, you can, but no, you can't," or they kinda, or looked the other way, or...
The, that is a separate issue, and frankly, I'll probably get another couple of gray hairs before we all then get this taken care of. But I was explaining to Eric before the meeting, that we are still negotiating, we're still working. Our, we have realigned and redesigned our whole outdoor lighting staffing and structure, and for the first time in 40 years, I feel really comfortable with street lighting. And I didn't, I have to give my director, Rob Osborne, credit, 'cause when he jumped on that horse and started on the crusade, I thought, "Holy cripe, we've been through this before." But it's finally coming, I think, to fruition, but it is a separate document, and we're gonna continue to work with Pat and everybody else to make sure. And we're still not gonna be probably as well-liked as we like to be, but we'll try and come up with it that satisfies from a safety perspective and also from an aesthetics perspective for you folks.
And also, thank you, Kathy, for being there whenever we have questions. And also, thank you, Kathy, for being there whenever we have questions and stuff. Well, you've always helped us along the way.
Well, thank you. Look at me now. This time next year, I will be retired, so we'll, we'll have one more good CML together.
Thank you, counsel. Anyone else? Kathy, thank you so much for being here. You've been a great friend of the city of Alamosa historically, and we appreciate that. We, we're, we're just happy to, to have you here, and this, this agreement seems like it's going to work for another 20 years.
Well, we think so. And it's, it's one of those, is I'll be back here for the second reading hopefully also. But I don't believe there's going to be any gap. I mean, what's nice is public service company Excel has gotten smart, and they'll be making a replacement for me three months before I retire so that we'll have some segue. So you won't, can't get rid of me that easily.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mayor, with that, I'll, I'll make the motion that we pass on first reading ordinance number four, 2014, set it for a public hearing on June 4th at 7 o'clock or soon thereafter.
I second. I have a motion and a second. Counsel, start voting. Christie?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report this evening? Rusty?
Yes, I have a quick update. Marketing board. Let me get my notes together here. Marketing board, we met on the 8th, right after the last council meeting. Probably the highlight of that, the thing we need to, I need to bring up is, May 27th is the opening date for Splash Land, and they're offering the family pass for four at the same rate as last year. They've restructured their rates. Last year, they did a, two separate passes, one if you used the slide, one if you didn't. This year, they're not doing that. They're doing one fee to get in and everything's available. But it sounds like that the family pass is probably the best deal. I have a fee structure if anybody's interested. And let me look at the agenda. So any, yeah, if you're interested to look at that, I have that with me. And that was, there was some discussion around the motorway building, but that's very premature right now. They're looking at doing some stuff with that. I think that would wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Michael? Jan?
Yes, I, I need to apologize. I wasn't, I wasn't able to make the Alamosa Board of Education meeting on Monday. I had to umpire baseball games at the Parks and Rec. But I will be meeting with Eric Romero, getting an update with some things. And also, just a heads up for council, I think we're meeting with the school board here coming up pretty soon. Christie, do you have any, the date on that? I don't know off the top of my head.
That's at the bistro, isn't it? At 6:30 in the morning? Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? No committee reports? We'll move on to staff announcements.
I don't have any from city manager's office, but from finance department, we are in and getting ready to finish up phase one of our update to Ncode. So by the end of the month, we will have moved all of our general ledger payroll and accounts payable into the new system. So your next reports that you see coming through in June for May's reports will look a little bit different. But that is going fairly smooth, so we'll have sections two and three, phase two and three. We don't have an exact date for yet, but it's exciting that we at least will get phase one finished and be done by the end of this month.
Thank you, Amanda. Anyone else? Staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment. Counsel? Rusty?
Wanted to thank Dawn Ronda Borders for the historic tour. If you haven't been on one, you need to go on one. I thought I knew everything, and just hanging out with these people that know way more about our buildings than me, they enlightened me a bunch, and I did think I knew quite a bit. Want to talk about something that's real critical for them. Their board is that courthouse, the county courthouse. If they relocate, it, it's going to be probably paramount for that board to get somebody in there and get that historic, keep that historic designation up to date. Something that I didn't realize is that courthouse is actually four separate buildings. Well, there's three, and then the old jail. So there's three, the horseshoe, and so that brought up some discussion when we go to, if there's interested parties in filling that building, that there is that opportunity of filling three or four separate buildings instead of just one big unit. So keep that in your mind if you have ideas about that, because I think that's going to be critical to our downtown as well as to our historic people. Thank you. And thanks for the tour, Dawn.
Thank you, Rusty.
Just, just a little comment on that too, Rusty. This is still, the people that are moving are the ones from the, the building right next to them. This thing is still, they're still discussing whether to even see if they can get funding. So we're looking maybe at least five years or so, five to 10 years. But it could come.
Thank you, Charlie. If the chief of police would come up here, maybe you could help me. We, we attended a meeting that was put on by, well, it's the peace officers and judges and what's the name of that organization, chief? I'll let you talk a little bit about that meeting and share your thoughts with us.
It was the task force to build a new courthouse and judicial center task force. They talk about possibly combining either remodeling the jail, if that's possible, and if that's not possible, either building a new jail in conjunction with a new courthouse. They're talking about a new site adjacent to the current county jail, the sheriff's office. And if that happens, if they can remodel, they're going to either build a tunnel or a bridge over the street so they can walk the prisoners, the inmates, over to the court as, as they need to go to court. Or if they have to rebuild, they're going to make it all one joint project and put them together so they can just walk them from building to building, whether it's through a secure fenced area or a hallway or something like that. But they're doing research now on what the current county jail is, the capacity, they've been over capacity for the last probably five years. So they're having that study done, done now to figure out what they can do to curb that. They farm out a lot of their inmates to other sheriff's offices, other jails, which is costing them about $500,000 a year to resource those, those inmates out. So with this group, we're talking about that project, how we can go about getting a new courthouse, getting a new jail, and making a justice center, housing all the judicial functions, probation, the courts, district attorney's office, public defender's office, all those different entities in the same area, make it a one-stop area for everybody that has courthouse needs, judicial needs. So once we get the study done, they will decide what they're going to go through. They're trying to apply for some grants to help with the, the cost of the studies. They're trying to find some funding to help with the cost of building this new project, and we'll move forward from there.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for being a member of that task force.
You're welcome.
You did a lot better job than I could have in bringing this forward, but...
Newly appointed, I'm, I'm new at that board as well, and so my information is coming in about the same as yours is, so...
Thank you. Yeah, there's been some discussion about maybe the county and the city in a joint venture of some sort to occupy or make plans for that old courthouse. And there are just so many opportunities for everyone, even a private investor could look at that. But I think that building probably should remain in the hands of government if possible. But there, there's a lot of potential for that utilization of that building.
There's been a lot of ideas thrown out already, and, and they want to research it and see, like you said, see if we can keep a government entity in that and, and move forward with it, so...
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Charlie?
I had another comment. We had our CML group come down, and they gave us an update on all the bills and stuff. But one great thing about the whole, that luncheon was what really is going around the whole valley. Each little community got up, and there's a lot of good things going on, and a lot of businesses going up in different small communities. And, you know, to have a, a restaurant or to have something, boy, these people are really proud of it. And I, and I think that, you know, when we speak of, we should always speak of Al, not only Alamosa, but the whole Sanders Valley and the great people that live within the six-county deal. So it was a really good, good, a good meeting.
Thank you, Charlie. Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, me and Mike Wisdom had a conversation over KRZA radio about the drone program. It was really positive, and I think it'd be a really good thing for the community. So we're looking forward to it, see what they decide to do.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you for being on that talk show. You know, it's, it's important for the folks that listen to that radio station to be aware of what's going on and the potential for growth here in the valley with that unmanned aircraft. That would be, that would be wonderful. All right. Anybody else? If not, then I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.